Call to order, the City Council Meeting of the City of Bel Air Beach will now come to order, April 1st edition. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance is required by the citizens of Bel Air. To the government, to the citizens, to the nation, under God, in the reasonable justice of the people.
And let's...
Councilmember Robinaki. Councilmember Mark Bean.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swoe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
Finance Officer Melanie Cruzona.
Here.
City Attorney Paul Moreno.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is actually the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Move, do I have a second? Do I have a second? On favor?
Aye.
Are there any, sorry, I called that short. Is there any changes that should happen to that agenda? Any one on council? I had one, if I'm permitted to make that. I wanted to move one item from the consent agenda, the number four, the approval. I'm gonna need some discussion on that, so I'd like to move that to the regular agenda if there's no objection.
Without objection, Mr. Mayor, I mean, that's okay. The justice be making motions for changes. You could say without objection of the council, I'd like to...
Okay, without objection of council? If there being no objection, we'll move number four to the regular agenda. Other than that, all in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Ayes? Passes complete? Okay, the first thing that we're going to do, change the agenda slightly, that the first item that comes now is the citizen comments, because to me, the citizens are the most important part of our city. I noticed some new faces in the audience, and there's also some folks here that are on council that were not at our attorney's presentation last time for the Roberts Rules of Order. We're gonna be doing things slightly different, and it's only different because we haven't really followed Roberts Rules of Order that heavily in the past. We're gonna try and follow it a little more closer to what we're supposed to be doing. I just wanna read a few sentences as to what's gonna be happening up here on council, so that everybody in the audience knows what's happening. And then also, I wanna read a few sentences, and this comes from our city code, by the way, of how the citizens are to address the council. So if you'll bear with me, I just wanna read a few things in. Every council member desiring to speak shall address the chair upon recognition by the presiding officer, shall confine all comments to the question under debate, and shall avoid all personalities and decorious language. Once recognized, the council member shall not be interrupted when speaking unless to call a such council member to order. While speaking, if the council member is called to order, such council member shall cease speaking until the question of order has been determined. The presiding officer shall avoid and prohibit debates between the chair and individual council members or among individual council members and between a member of the general public and council members. After that, on a question, then we will send the matter to a vote. I am going to do my best to make sure that on every single comment, and I've just discussed in this with our attorney, that the citizens have the ability to speak. If I miss that, I have no problem if someone here calls a point of order, and that's being someone on the dais called a point of order, reminds me that I forgot, and I would certainly call on the audience. The way I'd like to handle the audience stuff is simple. In the past, we've had a lot of hand waving, and standing up, and screaming, and stuff, and that's not the way I wanna do things. So if you, when it comes time to speak, you don't have to raise your hand beforehand, 'cause I'm not gonna call on you then. As soon as it's time to speak, somebody raise your hand, catch my attention, I'm going to acknowledge you. You come to the podium, you give your name and address, you address us, and then address that topic. You're limited to that topic, and you're limited to three minutes. And again, the same rules that we operate under are the same rules that you operate under. Basically, speak to the council, not to any one person. There's not gonna be a back and forth between the council and you. It's your three minutes, spend it how you wish. And if council members want to ask a question, then that'll come through me, or they'll ask through me. What I wanna avoid is having this back and forth, cross-talking, and arguing between people. It's not supposed to be like that. So, the other thing is, is in the audience, and it's in our rules, I'm not gonna read it line for line, but essentially, there's not supposed to be made any audible or disruptive sounds or noises. So, please, if you disagree with something, that's fine, we wanna hear your disagreement, but, you know, screaming and yelling and, you know, stuff like that, it's just not the way we're gonna be doing things. We're not gonna do it here, and we're not gonna do it out there. So with that said, I thank you for coming. There was a cool joke that they made this Unequal Fools Day, Patty, but that's what they did, so hopefully, we're not going to be making anything that's gonna be too funny here, but we have the citizen comments now, so would anyone like to be heard? That's one.
Longish Square, 517 Bel Air Avenue. I told you guys you weren't gonna get rid of me. Anyway, I'm here to speak to you and ask you to contact your senators to urge the Senate Community Affairs Committee to oppose Senate Bill 1140. The Community Affairs Committee meets tomorrow morning, or tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM. So if you're going to call, call before 4:00 PM. I've given Patty a copy of this. I'll maybe give you a little background here. Under current law, each party to a lawsuit is responsible for his or her own attorney's fees and costs, no matter who wins. There are exceptions to this rule. In Florida, the prevailing party may recover attorney's fees and costs from the losing party if authorized by statute. A municipality is considered, was established by the state legislature, in separately described areas containing inhabitants whose interest requires special local government activities not afforded by state or county units. Municipalities have broad statutory authority to enact ordinances under their homeless This bill streaks to the idea of preemption by the state legislature. Preemption essentially takes a topic or a field that local government might otherwise establish appropriate local laws and reserve that topic for regulation exclusively by the legislature. There are two types of preemption, express and implied. An express preemption, the state legislature has to state very specifically in the law, it's a specific statement by the legislature, and it must be accomplished by clear language to state stating that intent. An implied preemption is a decision by the court to create preemption in the actions of explicit legislative direction. Under the broad homeless powers, counties and municipalities may legislate, and currently with the legislature, on any subject which has not been expressly preempted by the state. So, under, there's, there was House Bill 824, and I was speaking specifically to Senate Bill 1140, which authorizes payment of attorney's fees and costs to the prevailing party in a challenge for local government's adoption or enforcement of an ordinance on the grounds that the subject of the ordinance is preempted by state constitution or state law. Under the bill, the court can, can order the prevailing party to pay the other party's attorney's fees and costs if the court determines that the ordinance has been expressly preempted. The House bill that looks like it's gotten through the House so far required that municipalities wave their sovereign immunity, and Paul can address that with you if you wanna understand what that means, but it basically says that you can't be sued without your consent. So the House bill says you are waiving sovereign immunity.
Excuse me. How much more time do you possibly have?
Maybe thirty seconds.
Do I have any direction that you can use? Yes, continue.
Let me get to the bottom line here. The impact here is the liability to pay the attorney's fees in cases where preemption of a subject area is unclear, and the local government did not intentionally file any express preemption of the subject area passed by the particular... In other words, a local government may be penalized in a case where they had in good faith believed that they were passing an illegitimate permissible ordinance. As you might imagine, with the ordinances that we have been passing in the recent code review, there could be some challenges, because anybody can bring a lawsuit, and if they prevail, we pay their court costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? There being no others, we'll close citizen comments. Next item on the agenda is the presentation by the Pinellas Sheriff's Office.
Good evening, good evening, Sheriff. My name's Captain Mike Leiner. I know I was good, Mr. Mayor, probably the council member. I just wanna come down. Typically, the report will be done by the city sergeant or the corporal, but I wanted to be here for the first one, and then being April 1st and all.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So, as many of you are aware, due to how early your meeting is, particularly talking about the month before, so I'll go through that real quick, and then also some data on some federal research for the last month, and you do that as well. Regarding the month in your board, you had the one aggravated assault on your UCR, excuse the UCR data, that was related to a domestic call with an arrest. The burglaries, there were two burglaries. One involved an individual that was out of town for about three months, then came back and was picked up, somebody trying to get him in the garage. They want prosecution, they wanted to document. I just like to remind everybody, if you have residents that are out of town for a period of time, you can call us and do what's called a house check, and we're more than happy to do that, so we can catch that stuff in advance. The other burglary involved, the gentleman, he came out into his garage, he has a garage open about two feet. He came out, somebody was trying to crawl under it. The gentleman did the correct thing, he called us, scared the person away, didn't confront them. Person goes down the street, the reason is, good that they called us and don't take matters in your hands. The gentleman, the person had a little bit of mental health issue, but he wound up getting in a fight with a deputy. So they wound up tossing him, going down the ground, and it was a pretty decent fight. Excuse me. So, like I said, we'd rather we take that off than you citizens do that, and he got the appropriate treatment, or he was arrested burglar, but then they refer that way. And then unfortunately, the larcenies, there came in the three that was related to campaign signs during this lovely election and such, so we didn't get the one good description and all that, and we asked around, but we kind of got by the door. Thankfully, it all adds up, but that's why you see that on the report. Then going over to the arrests, most, or a lot of the missing homes, a lot of these are related to the traffic enforcement. Four, four of these arrests were for drug贩子, and two were for being alive, so that's six of the nine. The other three were related to, two of them were related to a gentleman I talked to a while, but through the burglary, through the rest of the burglary, and then the obstruction of the fight. He also went and still opened his disposal sex organs, I can't get too much into it with an open case, however, involved someone without clothes, but in their backyard. So realistically, with an open case, that's gonna be some of the courts gonna have to decide, privacy issues and such. But there's nothing really jumping off the page that's of a huge concern up there for the citizens. Then you have the third page, obviously, all your, typically just captures all the activity, the most of it being trapped, so when the house checks, I talked about, when you're out of town, go around and do those. You don't really have a huge, on the last page, are on a huge issue with crashes, one of three last month, especially with all the traffic improvements, we're gonna all get that, so that's not a bad number. I don't think much comes up, just the parking and the traffic. You had twenty-two parking citations, that's a result of one hundred and seventy-nine documented patrols. And when I say documented, we have directed patrols in there, where the deputies go and they do it, so I have some type of data. Hopefully, they always go in and document it, but there could be one or two couple times they don't. Does one hundred and seventy-nine documents, they actually went in and documented people in these patrols? And that was with, obviously, a concern, parking enforcement, that is, well, and they give us a call, and we're gonna make sure we were responsible for that. So that's pretty much on February, and then the only other, so I had kind of three things from, from March, just so you're not waiting until the next month here. You had one that was actually here. You had a transient come in, but didn't have a shirt on, was trying to shave in the bathroom or, so hopefully, we got, we got him and took care of that problem. The other two, one was related to, came in as a water rescue, I don't know what's coming up with late, you had somebody that jumped off the bridge, that has some mental health issues, so she received appropriate assistance, and then on the way down here, I called another person that was actually up on the bridge. The deputies were able to talk to that person before they jumped in the water. So I don't know what's going on, but that lady got services to do. The other one is kind of a good investigation, up on 25th, there's a runoff, and some people had scheduled a meeting to see the house to rent, and unfortunately, they were sent out back fishing when the deputies get called, a little bit of a punt until the next day. So I don't know what their intent was, but when the deputies made contact with them, they were there out of the Lakeland, so they had to go back to their car to get their identification. When they get back to the car, they decided to discover a pipe, so then some other stuff, and actually, one lady got arrested for a little bit of marijuana, but she had a pretty decent amount of meth, meth, it's like you never say meth in a, in a meeting. So, it was a pretty good investigation, just based on these people thinking that you just show them and fish off somebody's dog, because they got a punt the next day. So I thought that was worth noting. I didn't really see, it's kind of difficult, it's like a runoff, like we have analysts that do your report, so I could answer stuff, so I didn't really see anything huge on burglaries and larcenies and stuff like that. It's not to say you won't see something next month, but it was a target one. But those are pretty much the key ones that caught that. I think that's, that, if you have any questions for me, or do you mind council questions?
No, I do have a few questions, Captain. On the deputy activity page, this is more for education, we had three items that I had a question, and just really for an explanation of what they are, directed patrols, contact, and supplement. I didn't know what those were.
The directed patrol are typically, if they go out, those are like, I was talking about the number link out for the, for the link out. We enter them on the system as directed patrol. So right now, you have directed patrols for traffic, directed patrols for parking. So what they'll go out there and make an out, these are all numbers that are completely dispatched, make an out, go up, I'm basically an upper location, this shows up, you know, they don't have to enter into the other system, but sometimes a lot, but that's why they don't always match, doesn't make sense. I guess that hundred and forty-seven, whatever that were documented, sixty-three? I'm sorry, I got all my notes. I go to the next page. Yeah, one hundred and seventy-nine directed patrols for, for the parking areas, but that obviously doesn't match up, as you can see, they're coming in special details. They're just different things in our system to capture the activity. So this is just showing the busy, basically.
The direction comes from our city to you, to our city manager, I imagine?
Yes, so typically, yeah, if you have something, I mean, they're always doing their work and stuff, but obviously, the place, it's been, it's been on traffic, and it's been parking. So if something else came up, they'd let us know, and then give me a call. If it's anything y'all need, then call them, and do whatever it means. Our work is the liaison for this city and nine other South County contract cities, so just one way to contact and call me, I'll be liaison with other people, make sure we got this stuff. And I didn't remember the other two I called.
Contact and supplement.
The contact, typically, I could be a dispatch call, so it's like, I'll check well there. And then supplement, supplement is just a, to supplement to an original report. So if you had, let's say, a missing juvenile, they'll come in as their original case number, and then they'll prove an house located, that would be a supplement to the original report, maybe stuff like that. Or if a supplement could be, another deputy comes in, and you do the city help out, so your deputy's handling something, another deputy comes in, and takes action on the same call, the deputy's gonna call the original, the other deputy will call the supplement.
Another question for you, are ordinance violations showing up when it says traffic citations? Is that, what I'm thinking about is beach easements and stuff like that. I know there's an ongoing problem, I didn't make the first week, and I got a citizen complaining about the beach easements. There's people using them for Indian rocks, they roll in at, you know, a couple minutes to sunset, and, you know, I don't know, it's a little crazy, there's dogs on the beach, I've heard that, and I know you're out there, 'cause I see, you know, I see every once in a while, there's, you know, several beach easements to patrol, but I don't know if those are, if those numbers are included in here or not, or if we're even ticketing for that.
Well, you got one thing for parking, obviously, I'm down there for that, so we're handling that. And then the ordinance aspect of it would be the dogs on beach, or playing on the beach, so someone, I can't remember, it's glass on beach, I don't know. So, if they're going out doing like a strip, I guess parking would come in separately than in ordinance. So dogs on beach would be in ordinance, and then if you have a glass on, you'd do glass on beach, I think, so maybe two different. Do I understand your parking is tied to the ordinance, will we capture that separately on your report?
This was the six-three beach, and it's been ongoing. I live right there, and I visit constantly, so, you know, and I see the sheriff come in every once in a while, like probably several times a week, you can't catch them all, and there's three easements they have to patrol, I imagine it's probably happening at the other ones, but a lot of out-of-town people who drive in at the last minute, and it kind of gets crazy. If I'm a Bel Air Shore resident, and I'm seeing all of that happen, it's not gonna make for good relations with the neighbors.
The numbers I gave you with the parking enforcement, like Marina, the word that included the Bel Air Shore three easements, which those directed patrol, your directed patrol's committed for those as well, it's just not really the Bel Air Shore.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
I have a question. I was looking at the same as you, and one just popped up, and I had a thought about it, animal calls? There's been a increasing rise in sightings of coyotes in the community, and it probably has nothing to do with your office, but has a warning, do you interface with animal control, or is there anything going on to try to...
I mean, we have something that we need animal control, obviously.
So you have to...
I don't know what the two animal calls were on this.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just saying, there's been increased sightings of coyotes in the neighborhood, and a warning of animal control's involved in this, or does any type of initiative going on to continue?
I'm not certain what the, I mean, if they have stuff, they'll send it to us, but I haven't, they may very well have, I haven't seen it.
Okay, yeah, just pop through my head, and discuss with the city manager. Thanks. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you, good job. I'm sorry, did you, do we have any citizen comments? Yes, I messed it up already. Do we have any citizen questions? Okay, thank you.
Well, Captain, like I said, this supervisor, this big supervisor over here, but like anytime we only, I saw you for a personal, we appreciate that, everybody moved as well.
We did, we kept the council together, at least seating-wise. All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay, the next item is our consent agenda, which we've actually moved the minutes into, into the regular agenda, just because I have some questions on it, I think we might have to adjust something. So we just have the proclamation. Madam Clerk, since this concerns you, I'm not sure, do you want, will we read the entire proclamation, or how do we wanna do this?
No, really, it's just in support of, you know, supporting all the clerks, so we don't normally read it, no, sir.
Okay. In general, what we have, it's the 50th anniversary, correct? Of the Municipal Clerks Association, of which Patty Gendrea here is a member, and this, we have proclamation that's going to make the week of May, was it 5th?
Fifth through eleventh.
Fifth through eleventh. Will be Municipal Clerks Week, we're gonna honor her with a proclamation, actually honor all the clerks, so I'll sign that tonight if there's no objection on council. I'm not hearing any objections, so congratulations, and thank you for all your service and work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Move number four down, we might as well bring that one first, and keep it in order. Madam Clerk? Since we moved that out of the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes?
Right.
Okay, so we'll leave that next then. So, the next topic is the approval of the March 4th city council meeting minutes, and the March 18th special city council meeting minutes. This is the approval of minutes. Do we have a motion? It's moved by councilmember Ben, oh, the second, second, by Dave Gaddis. I would like, is there any discussion on the council? Since I asked for it, I do have some discussion, just really the question, it came actually from a citizen, and I'm just relaying that information. On page five of the, this is the March 4th minutes, it has that a motion was made by councilmember Harper, consecutively by councilmember Petrowski, to approve Resolution 201901 with the approved modifications. And the question came in, I'm not sure if the person was here or not, I think they were, but they said, well, what were the modifications? And I was here, and I remember them, and this is why I wanna try and stay with Roberts Rules of Order in the future. It wasn't handled as an amendment, and if I recall correctly, and councilmember Shirley, this was your amendment, so you please just jump in if I say anything wrong. As I recall, the issue was that in the strategic plan, councilmember Shirley had an issue with the fact that it talked about rising sea levels, and I think we took it out in the end, or we modified it, just saying that potentially rising sea levels, I'm not quite sure how it was adjusted, but if someone wants to just bring that piece of information here and make an amendment, an adjustment, then we can, I guess, approve these minutes of the...
Do we know how to finally modify?
I'm not sure. Madam Clerk, do you know?
Right above, well, there's actually Vice Mayor Gunn saying, I think the wording was chosen not to address, and then the last sentence, the last part of that is, if sea level rise is an issue, then it's going to have a long-term effect.
I was in the audience, but that's the way I remember it, hasn't ever been?
I believe it has, sir. I believe it has, or has been.
I have the strategic point, it does say, if sea level rise occurs, it will have a long-term effect. Are you okay with that? No, no, that's fine.
So, I can't make the adjustment, the motion for an adjustment, but if somebody will make that motion, I think everything else is fine with these minutes from what I see, and everybody else may have to overturn.
So move. Second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Passes? So the minutes are now approved, and that, that was the March 4th minutes. Does anyone have any issues on the March 18th minutes? Hearing no comments? All in favor of approving the March 18th minutes?
Aye.
Ayes? Passes, you have them, so both minutes are approved. We now move on to number six. We're going to authorize the city manager to execute a second contract addendum and purchase order for installation of utility meter boxes and conduit conversion to underground utilities in Bellevue Island's estate. And Madam Clerk, thank you for adding this extra point, this is what we had spoken about, a little bit extra piece of information, to execute the contract with the Utility Consultants of Florida for or required, for required meter upgrades for Bellevue Island Estates Island Underground project in the amount of $181,811. And we have a motion to put that through.
So move.
Gun, Mr. Ben, discussion.
I have a question. The, I guess we addressed to Lynn, how, this contract, how does that tie to the budget?
It's within the budget, actually, it's a little budget by about a hundred thousand.
With the budget?
This is really the final piece that we need to get the connection to the meter box on the side of the homes, and for those sixty homes plus that have overhead wires. So, we went back and to the consultant and asked him to try to use the contract that we're using for the conduit. So this, this worked out better in the project's favor as far as the budget goes, and it's all tied together, and really, this is the final piece.
So in the future, could we, when we're, when we do things like this, could we also just have the budget sheet attached, so that we know that it's in budget, I mean, because...
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, that would just make it a lot...
Yeah, there was $300,000 put, put into that section of the budget, and we're gonna use maximum of $181.
Good job, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, please. Yeah, just for clarification purposes, this is all part of, it comes out of budget for the assessments for the PBI residence.
Yes, so I'll, I'll come down with the underground assessment that Bellevue Estates Island would expect.
It's one of the clarify, thank you.
Any other comments? I do have a comment, actually, some questions, and Mr. Ray, city manager, I'm gonna direct it to you if it's okay, if we do it this way? Okay. And actually, Mr. Marino might also go to you, so I don't have a problem with either of you answer these questions. I go to the second addendum itself, and just a minor thing, it says it's on the blank day of March, we're gonna change that to April. But as we get down further, it talks about, now I'm on page two of the addendum, it talks about that, the, that just starts on page one, and it says, "On March 15, 2019, consultants provided to the city a letter that estimated the cost of the undergrounding connections for the home sites in an amount not to exceed $181,811." in an amount not to exceed $181,811, detailed the bid process." Now, I think the first thing that's in our books, which is the letter, it is not labeled as Exhibit A, it probably should be. That's, I think, the letter that's being referred to, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I read that through and I didn't see anything about it detailing the bidding process.
We, we went out for an RFP back in, I'm trying to remember, September, no, September, October. And this was part of that grouping that we would hire the consultant to solicit and get the contracts, solicit bidders and get the contracts. And we approved the first portion and this is just the second portion to that. So it was in that RFP.
But it's not on the March 15th letter, so we might have to adjust the second addendum to exclude that. I don't have, I mean, personally, I don't have a problem with it not being there, given what you're saying. But it's the referendum, the addendum, I don't believe is correct the way that's written. I'll defer to council on that.
We just put this together based on information received. It's my understanding that March 15th letter set forth those costs that were to be used. I don't understand why you, why do you want it, Mr. Mayor?
Well, it says, I'm just reading our, our addendums, since it's a legal document, and it says it detailed the bid process. I don't see it detailing, it doesn't even talk about the bid process in that letter. So I think maybe if that's stricken, we're probably okay. But unless I'm missing something, I don't see it detailing the bid process.
That can be, that can be stricken out in addition.
We'll straighten that out, but I'm, I'm not sure. Maybe the original addendum had that in it and it's, this is just a second addendum to the contract.
Councilman Aki, I, did you have a question? Because I, I'm not finished, but go right ahead.
No, say, is the memorandum on the first page?
Yes.
Does that address what you're talking about, the model?
No, it doesn't have anything about how the bid was done. That's a problem. I didn't see it. I just want to be correcting our.
Well, actually it does. It says, "The project scope and need is required. Consultants solicit and select a contractor for solicitation of required conversion items." And that's, that's what I was talking about. We did on the first one. But if, if we just need to adjust something in the thing, I think we're fine.
I do have a bigger issue and that's with the, the dollars over here. It talks about, and I'm getting on page two here, and it talks about a 10% contingency that is supposed to be added here. 10%, it's a $166,811 contract plus a 10% contingency. And if my math is correct, a $166,811, that should be $16,681, bringing us to $183,442, not $181,811. And I just want to clarify the numbers.
Well, the contractor is that, all he's asking for is $15,000 in contingency. So we'll clarify that. We'll adjust that also, okay? With those, those two adjustments. Yeah, we'll leave it at 15.
15,000?
Yeah. Mark is here. I don't know if he has any issues with that. He's the one that put, you know, gave us the numbers. He put 10% contingency and then he put $15,000 there.
For the record, Mark Board, Utility Consultants of Florida, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but I believe that was the extra amount for the bond. That's what that was. We might just need to reflect the language. So it's the 10% plus the additional for the bond portion.
I see. So in other words, the 10% plus the bond cost, that's just a few extra thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
If we, I mean, if we can have a proposal for an amendment on that, will you approve the amendment first then? And then approve this resolution? I think that, does anyone else have any other questions on this? I think I'll need a, I'll need a motion then for the amendment. Vote on the amendment first. I believe that's our rules award.
So moved? Move for amendment?
So we moved it. Lynn, the amendment, if I have this correct, is to make that $15,000 total instead of the, instead of 10%, it will say $15,000 and we're going to strike that thing that says they detailed the bid, the bid process. And I believe everything else is okay.
On page?
Uh, it's all on page two.
Oh, at the top, yeah. Yeah, we'll just remove that and as long as everyone's fine with that, then if you approve it, we'll just adjust it before he signs it and brings us.
Madam Clerk, is that sufficient for the adjustment for the addendum? So we have a movement by Vice Mayor Gunn, second, second by Councilmember Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Passes unanimously. That's the amendment. Now we have to go for the referendum itself for the, for the second addendum. So as amended, we're now, that's on the table, we're going to approve the second addendum to the agreement for professional service with Utility Consultants of Florida as just recently amended. So what do we, do we have a, we have a?
So the?
Amendment, Mr. Ben. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes? Passes unanimously. Okay. Next item is the consideration of selecting council members as voting delegates and alternate voting delegates for the Barrier Islands Governmental Council of Big C. And then related to that, we're going to have two more hours for that. One's going to be the same thing for the Florida League of Cities and then the Sun Coast League of Cities. Madam Clerk, is, what, how does the nomination process work for this? I know what typically happens on this, but you can tell us.
Typically, it's volunteers or nominations. And historically, it's been the mayor for the Big C as the voting delegate and then another council member for the alternate in case the mayor's not available to attend the meeting.
So we'll do the Big C first and the nominations can come from anyone on the board? We have nominations. Nomination for the mayor. Do you? Do we need seconds on this or is it just nomination, vote?
Nomination, vote.
Do we have anyone else who would like to, you know, anybody to make other nominations? There being none. It looks like it's North Korea here. I'm the only one voting, so. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I had been at that meeting last week. David West did that, I'd be the mayor and I'm honored to be able to represent the city. Thank you. The next is the consideration of selecting council members as voting delegate for the Sun Coast Florida League of Cities. We need a, I'm sorry.
We also need the?
We need alternate. Yes, thank you. I just thought at the same time. Thank you. So we do, generally, I'm going to be here most of the time, but sometimes I, like next month, I have a business trip and it's rare, but I do have one. So we do need someone who will be willing to do this and we have the nominations.
I'll nominate Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Any seconds? Or do we don't need a second? Any other nominations? We have now, Glenn Gunn for, for the alternate. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Congratulations. Okay. Madam Clerk, on number eight, do we need an alternate also? Is it just a, a council member?
Yes, sir. It's, it's just one voting.
Okay. So this is the Florida League of Cities. We need to nominate and select a voting delegate. Nominations?
I would like to nominate Glenn Gunn. I don't know if that's possible.
Respectfully to Gunn.
Okay.
Thank you. Obviously, you stick with your position and we'll go with the mayor.
Thank you. Any other nominations? If there are no other nominations, all in favor of me being your voting delegate? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for the, I appreciate that. Last, we have the consideration of selecting council members as voting delegate for the Sun Coast League of Cities and nominate and select a voting delegate. Again, no alternate on this?
Yes, sir.
Those meetings are open, by the way, to everyone, so anyone can come to that and in fact, any citizen can come to that. They're quite informational. We got an earful last week when we were there. So do we have nominations for that? Nominate the mayor. Thank you. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor of me being your voting delegate? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Thank you again. I just want to say on that, and before we get off it, I'll send one of my mayor's comments, but that is open to all the citizens and it's also open to the council members. The stuff that happens there is not stuff that comes before our council and Attorney Counsel, please let me know if I'm saying anything incorrect. I do not believe Sunshine's going to be an issue on that. We're talking about state legislation. Former council member Schwer was here telling us some of the information that's going on down in Tallahassee. I'm going to bring you up to date on some of this stuff. It's eye-opening. So if anyone wants to speak with me about it, please let me know on this because I want to take that information to these meetings. That's what they're looking for.
Okay, we're going to do, anybody here that wants to speak to him, they do it here. As a matter of fact, it goes beyond what Onda was presenting. The situation facing this and every other municipality as a result, remedial legislation being considered in Tallahassee right now is catastrophic is the best way I can describe it. Something I've never seen in my 40 years of representing Florida government. And I was shocked at the sponsors, who I know personally. And it's something that really has to be addressed and addressed aggressively. And I was going to put a, a kind of a little white paper together to get it out to council, just to give them a heads up. Maybe I'll just roll it to you, mayor, and we'll just do it that way.
No, and, and I agree with council. We were there last week. This was, it was an eye-opener for us. And what they're doing in Tallahassee is going to gut some of the stuff that we hold near and dear to us if it gets through, including that whole band that we have on short-term rental. So I'm going to talk more about it during the mayor's comments, but if people have stuff to talk to me about on this, please let me know. It's not stuff that comes before this council, so, but we'll, we'll clarify when you can talk with me on that. But I think if you're talking one-on-one with me, you can talk whatever you want as a citizen, so please let me know. Number 10, I'm not sure, Madam Clerk, what this is because there was nothing in my book, but it says, "Discussion of Councilmember Orientation and Format for Background Status Briefings by City Departments and Staff." So I'm not sure where this came from.
Miss Kurej.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Yes, I, I asked for this, for the agenda. We've been briefed by the boards and committees and I guess the next step is briefings by the city staff. Is that correct? And I just wanted to make sure that we have it in a format or a structure that answers all the questions for the new council members and the existing council members because obviously things change and there's still some areas to clarify. So I guess the questions I had was, who exactly will be giving the actual briefings? Will it be broken down by the actual departments? So we get to meet all the department heads and hear from them personally. And I would presume you talked about the number of people working for them, if any. How much their budget is, what they have to work with as far as?
Well, if we, if we do what we did last year, what we did, each, each person made up a list of their accomplishments in the past year, they put some goals forward and they also discussed things that at the time were stagnant. Things that, you know, maybe we brought to the council and no decision has been made or this, that and the other. So I was planning to use that same process and realistically, there's, you know, I, I guess we could say what their total budget is if that's what the council's pleasure is. I think everyone has a copy of the budget, but.
Well, I think so, but in just, just to recap everything, just a 10 or 15 minute, who works for them, how many people they have, what size of budget they're dealing with, what are their specific duties and responsibilities? Just to tie it up the line.
Well, they'll do that, but I'm, I'm saying, you know, as an example, code enforcement will tell you what they do, go around and the cases they've done and things of that nature. They'll give you their budget. There's only one person, kind of thing like that. And that's pretty much going to be the case except for Kyle and he has two people. Everybody else has, well, I guess I have six, I should say.
And, and just like you stated, what are the issues on their?
Right.
What's, what's, what's eating their lunch and, and what can the council do to assist them or something to that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just, you know, if the council's fine, like how we did it last year, with those couple extra things. That's, that's what we'll do. And now to present that at the work session, we're planning on 15.
Because I didn't know if we had anything else that they wanted to know, so that's why I brought it up. Additionally, at the, the sessions we had with the boards and committees, somebody raised, I, I think it was the Parks and Recreation. I mean, they themselves said the suggestion of some community activities, well, we're not quite sure what the demographics of the community are specifically children. So I dug into some, some demographics and I passed these down the road here and what you had is a four pages of demographics. It's, the website is in the second line on the first page, but the source is actually the U S Census for the period 2018-19 covered. Total population of Bel Air Beach, 15, 6, 15, 60 total people in the median age is basically 57. Statistically speaking, that's the very middle age bracket. But you can see in the tabular data, it's broken down by age brackets and the total number of males and females and the total, because some told us for both. And then by the age brackets, I also compute, I also computed the percentage of the population. And then at the far right-hand column, you'll see how those totals within the age brackets basically cumulative numbers for the percentage of the population. I presented that information graphically. You can see it's broken down by the different male and female and both on the second page. The, the third page shows what percentage of those age brackets are part of the Bel Air Beach population by percentage and then the cumulative percentages. And of course, the initial question by our board, the chairman before Parks and Recreation, was, we didn't know how many children were there. Well, if you look at the age bracket and the cumulative numbers for age under 10, it's basically 6% of the population in Bel Air Beach. 95 children. Just for the record.
Senior activities?
As far as I'm concerned, 95 kids would be a very funny story to them. So I think we should still include the children.
One of the things that, we'll talk about it when I do my comments, but we had asked, one of the things I challenged the Parks and Recreation Board on was to come back and get community back in this community center. And I just threw out a few ideas, things like car shows or jazz festival outside, not doing Clearwater with 20,000 people, but something that could get maybe 20 people outside here, something small, you know, game night over here, things like that. And I'm sure they can come up with a lot better ideas than I have. But got to try and get people back over here. I think, thank you for the demographics, because that was the question is, what's our audience? And I think we see what the audience is going to be.
Yeah, my point was just that. I have a position on this, but question asked, question answered.
Excellent.
I'd like to make a point on this as well. I'm slightly confused on why we would put that in the Parks and Rec and not create a social committee so that they can be totally focused on social events versus the different activities that the Parks and Rec group have. So that would be my suggestion, so we can incorporate activities for children. So I mean, we're putting way too much on Parks and Rec. It's a totally different venue. That's why.
Yeah, just, just to bring another opinion up. In the past, we only did it once, unfortunately. Continue. But it's just a good thing to do once a year, just to get everybody. Doesn't matter what the age group is, when you get a bunch of people together, especially all living in the same city. They'll talk about something, whether it's a park or whether it's a prom or whether it's, say, a old house of voting, houses of fishing. I think we should do it every year for that reason, just to get the whole community together.
The other communities are doing it. Councilmember Aki and I were at Sun Coast League of Cities last week and they were, there, there were two major events going on. One of the towns was so proud. They had a car show. They had a, a street festival. They had everything going on. And then there was another town talking about their festival this weekend. And I kind of kidded her and I said, you want to tell them about our garage sale coming up? Because that's what we had, you know, we have a garage sale. And I, the garage sale's great, by the way. I go to it every year, but we, we got to do better than a garage sale because this is the kind of community, we want to be a premier community. These other towns are doing this and they, they're not big towns either. They're, you know, small things that they're doing, but it brings the community together. These mayors were so proud. These mayors were so proud to say what their city was doing. So I'd love to have a few events that I can finally go to Suncoast and say, "Hey, it's our turn. We're having a whatever, a car show or a chess tournament." I don't care what it is, just something to get the citizens involved. Because I've been at the Hot Luck Dinner here and it was very well-received. And there's, you know, there's some good events that we do here, so I'd like to see more of them. And that was my challenge. And if Parks and Recreation, I see Scott Canny in the audience, if Parks and Recreation, they didn't say that they wouldn't do it. And if it's too much, if you can just check with them, you know, I like Councilmember Swope's comment. You could set up a committee for that, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, we're on the city attorney comments. Mr. Marina?
It's a couple of issues. I don't know if we've gotten these letters out to you all yet, but we received a letter from an individual who is sight impaired with regard to access to our website through the latest technology for those who might be sight impaired or hearing impaired. I had asked General Counsel for the Florida League of Cities to give me a status report of how many of these claims are being bandied around the state by these individuals who are claiming denial of ADA access. I just got that in about an hour ago, before this meeting. I proposed a response letter to the individual who wrote to us and I'll see if y'all get that response. It's a serious business, I want you to think about the remedial action that we may have to take in order to deal with this so it does not become a claim, a dollar claim against the city, a monetary claim against the city. We would be very fortunate not to have any of those ever, whether it's for public records or anything else. I've sent a draft letter to the city manager and it'll be going out. But it's something that you need to put on your agenda and find out, what is the latest technology? And what are the other cities doing in connection with this? It's my understanding, these letters, making these claims and demands are going to every city and county in the state. Before these, we had the issue of email blasts making astronomical public records requests on us to see if we would knee-jerk those responses so that they can get these lawyers to file these acts against the cities. And a lot of cities got caught by it. We missed that bullet. And the legislature changed the ground rules that give judges discretion with regard to award attorney fees and judges weren't too keen about what was going on, so they were given nothing. End of story. So we're getting into that now, but I'm providing you as mayor and the city manager with the latest information I have so that hopefully we can make this an agenda item that we need to address, we need to address under the Americans with the Stone side. And I'll see if y'all get that.
Excuse me, before you go to the next point, do you recommend that we do that? We can hold before our work session, which I believe is scheduled for the 15th, we can hold a special session. I know the seriousness of this, I actually brought it up at the last work session. We took some remedial work, but I don't know that it's enough. So do we need to have a special session before that to deal with this next, in two weeks?
Mr. Gaddis, what do you think?
I think we need to kind of tread carefully on this. We've taken down the minutes and the agendas and things of that. We also, Patty ran the website through and through the recommendations before League of Cities came and they didn't come out good. But we also ran a much larger city and they came in worse, so just to see what the differences were. So I think we put something up today on the website that basically says we're, you know, if you have an accessibility issue, you need to contact us. After, we got this letter in the mail that was dated, but I think it was February 18th and we got it Friday. So I guess he walked it here, I'm not sure. So I think at this point, until we kind of get all the attorney, you know, legal and I'm even going to talk to our website provider and find out what they have. So until that point, we may need to do that on the 15th, but I wouldn't, I'd come to you, Mayor, and say, hey, we need to have a special meeting.
Counsel, I just heard Mr. Gaddis, this is not time really for the discussion, but would you mind if we just continue with this? And just give us, we'll go back to you, but if you mind, can you continue with the questions from the council?
Yes.
I don't actually have a question, it's more of a comment. At our last work session, I agreed to research this topic. What I determined is that there's actually a standard that's set, that's nationally accepted as what's acceptable for every type of content available on a webpage or a website. So I've been going through and one of the biggest problems that I've noticed is that our documents are scanned as images. They're not recognized, the characters aren't recognized and converted into actual text that you can read. So there's a learning curve also of how we actually do this in the right way. And basically, we proved to them going forward that we do it right. But also, it's going to require some work going backwards, taking our old documents, pulling them back out and re-scanning them the right way so that they're optically recognized, the characters are basically converted into text. Because that's the only way these reader programs that visually impaired people can read. Also, there's some other issues, like the videos we post online. There's a way to turn that on to where it'll do its best to understand what you're saying and convert it into a sort of like close caption. The problem is, is that whenever we're doing these presentations, we're, we have guests on, things like that, especially the smaller meetings, we're not miking it well enough and therefore, let's say YouTube, if we're using those guys, they have a rough time interpreting it. But even once that happens, it's still going to require a lot of manual labor to go in and add because they're done of making mistakes. Everybody, you know, one guy's his potato, you get the point. And so I'm still looking into it, but I'm, for the next work session, I'm going to have a list of recommendations. I've been doing this for a very long time and at least we can look at the standard together and I can say, definitely, we're going to hit this way, this way, and this way. And I like the idea of posting something, but I don't recommend just posting it on the front page. I recommend putting it somewhere at the very bottom in very fine text that they have to click on to go get. Because if you put, you blast something on the homepage, we're going to be attacked. So just my recommendations and I'll have more for you at our next work session. In the meantime, if you need more information, you'd like to talk to me about it, we can serve you.
Thank you for your research on that. Just, again, I'll come right back to you, Mr. Marina. For the folks in the audience who may not know what we're talking about here, this came up initially, it actually started with, I was sitting in the audience at a work session and Lynn Reeves handed out a, it was just an article, I think, for the newspaper. He made everyone on council aware of it. And I didn't sense that it got, you know, that much attention because there was a lot of other stuff that was pretty important going on. But I didn't forget about it. And it really came to light when we were at the Suncoast League of Cities, not this last meeting, but the one before that. And people at Clearwater and other places were talking about how they had to pull their website down. What's happening is, is there's individuals that may very well have an impairment, some type of impairment. They go on the website and because the website's not compliant, it's not ADA compliant. Somehow, the courts have now taken the ADA, which is usually used for buildings like this, and they've turned it into something that is applicable to certain websites. It was an easy lawsuit. And unfortunately, there are attorneys out there that just go for the easy lawsuits. And what they were doing was going from city to city and bringing up these lawsuits. And they were settling, and I gave something to the council last time. Daytona Beach had to settle for, I think, $10,000 or $15,000 for their lawsuit. So what I had recommended last time was before this happens, we be proactive. And it looks like, well, it looks like they just got us here, at least sending us a letter. So that's what this is all about. It's, you know, there's, we certainly want to be helpful to anyone who has any type of impairment that needs to, you know, have the special characters or special, you know, ability to read or hear what we're doing. But this isn't about that in most cases. This is about, you know, a way to make money and we're trying to not get our city hit. Because it's not that you settle up with one person, it's over with. It's one person and it's the next one, it's the next one. They can bankrupt you if they want. So with that said, counsel, I defer back to you.
I thank you very much for that. You explained this issue about as good as anyone can. I thank you very much for that and appreciate that research, I had no idea you were doing this business. The second thing I want to talk about, we had a citizen who sent me, and I'm sure to everybody, an email suggesting that our office didn't know what we were talking about when it came to enforcement or lack of enforcement of deep restrictions in various subdivisions within the city. While we had, we had Jackie Spodo do some research on that, she came up with a very nice opinion that I agree with completely. And that is, because there are so many various subdivisions within the city, there are various groups of, what would be chain amounts of small HOAs in the city. Those restrictions that are placed there by the original developers vary and are not all the same. So we're of the opinion, and all of our research indicates, and it's not the city's responsibility to enforce these. In fact, it's the group of homeowners within that little subdivision that have the responsibility of either enforcing these or let them die by natural consequence. I think some of them say, if you don't review these every 10 years, they just die automatically in the market institutions. I kind of took exception to the fact that the individual suggested that the city hire a special attorney to handle this matter. In fact, I thought Jackie handled it appropriately and I think you've got a copy of her opinion right there in front of you. Comments?
Comments? Any citizen questions? Yes.
My name is John Handzuk. Let me spell that for you because every time you put it in the minutes, it's different. It's H-A-N-D-Z-U-K. I live at 10320 Second Street. The main concern I have, and I understand where we're coming from about the city's website and the ADA issue, but in the interim of taking it down and not getting or having information available to the rest of the citizens puts us at a disadvantage. And I think what Councilman Gaddis indicated about this disclaimer thing, I don't know if this is going to work and maybe this is something the city attorney could answer more clearly from a legal standpoint is, if that disclaimer would be inserted in the fine print at the bottom of the homepage, would it in essence give us a quote-unquote, "Get out of jail card" with this ADA thing in the interim until it's fixed?
Quick answer, not mine to you. I don't think that the disclaimer at the bottom is going to change the key issue. The key issue is that the visually impaired have programs that read. One of my former senior partners at a law firm, in fact, Jackie and I both belonged to a law firm, was Sal Saxon Nielsen. Richard Sale was totally blind, is a brilliant lawyer. And we tried every conceivable reader program back then that was on the market and we couldn't come up with one that is acceptable to you. But the technology has changed. And I think what Mr. Gaddis was saying is that if we put it in the proper format, they'll be able to read it. It'll read out to them. But that's only half the issue. The other half are the hearing impaired. So we're now going to have to put, like you see runners on television.
Yes, sir.
Running with subtitles, like you do on a foreign movie, you know, you're almost going to have to do that. So I think he's on track with his research and I think ultimately we'll come to a solution. In the meantime, some people may be inconvenienced, but we sure can place the city in jeopardy of willfully, knowingly violating ADA and I think we'll ultimately come up with a solution. I think he's probably going to be the key to it.
No, I'm not suggesting we put the city in jeopardy, don't get me wrong. But I discovered I couldn't access the agenda for tonight until I got an email on Friday. And earlier this afternoon, I did log into the city's website, if you will. And there's a lot of stuff I can't get to. But my suggestion would be, in the interim, for those of us who don't have an ADA issue that try to be involved in the city government and be aware, the city does have our emails. I know they have mine. Perhaps a notice could be sent out en masse to those emails informing the citizens why we can't access certain aspects of the city's website for certain information. And you understand what I'm saying, sir? Mr. Marina?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's important to understand that the request for accommodation that we received, and we received it on the 29th, even though the letter's dated on February 18th. And I have prepared a response to the individual, which will be out tomorrow. This demand was for 2018, 2017, 2016, 2015, and all city council agendas of backup material, backup. You ever see our loosely finer with all the?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Backup material for the years 2018, 17, 16. I view that as a public records request, first off. But that is so luminous, I don't even know how Patty's going to be able to deal with it. So I'm telling the gentleman, under 11907, 4D, if you make a public records request that involves extensive labor on the part of the staff, we're entitled to be compensated for that in advance. So I'm basically telling them that to begin with. I'm also going to tell them that the city council is going to be addressing this issue. So I really appreciate that you guys brought that up tonight. I think it's very appropriate.
So, Nancy, I think, I was the one who sent you the minutes because I know your interest in this and it, obviously...
I didn't want to put anybody in jeopardy.
No, I can do that. I'll send the minutes to anyone, not the minutes, the agenda to anyone who wants it. I don't see as a city, and counsel, please let me know if I'm saying something that's not correct, but I don't see as a city, if we have a request from someone, it costs us nothing to send out the agenda to a person. So persons like yourself and obviously everyone else who's in the audience tonight, you do want to come, you do want to see what's on the agenda or the minutes or what have you. I don't see why we can't give that to you because you're making that request. So you're not asking that we convert it into anything special that we're not already. If we can develop a small mailing list, and I see Madam Clerk is waving, so, it's up to you.
I have received several requests and I have sent them out. We are mailing lists. Mr. Reeves?
You mean the council contact?
No, not to everybody in the city, but just, I mean, we have what, about 20 people here? So, you know, there's about 20, 25 people.
If somebody wants the agenda, all they need to do is email Patty and she will send it to them. That's not a problem.
I can tell you.
And the other thing, the agenda's posted right outside the front door?
Yeah, well, okay, I don't know who stopped at the front door when I'm going across the causeway here.
Well, I'm just saying, we've got it publicly posted.
Okay.
You know, and maybe we just even, instead of having the inconvenience of them telling each month that they want it, just, you're going to get it until you stop and until we get the stuff back on. And maybe they just put it on a routine email, you just put it on... Maybe they just put it on a routine email, maybe just put it on a routine email for them, and if they just put them on and they get it every single month, they get what we get, basically. Does that work?
That'll work. I will call her in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel.
Regarding that request for those multiple years of background information and agendas, we've talked about this before, about superfluous or missing kinds of requests and responding with any cost or a price for supplying that information. Are we starting to generate a cost to respond to that request?
No, quite frankly, I, no cost has been projected with regard to the scope of that request. I'm going to have to get together with Patty, and she's going to have to take a look at what's in the record right now. We are not required to create a public record, only required to give people a public record that currently exists in the format that exists. So I haven't had a chance, I just got this, Patty.
Yeah, well, I'd be perfectly happy to help you sit down and try to help you figure out a model for figuring out a cost for this, because I think that's the appropriate response, not just go right after the data. Say, well, if you want this information, this is the cost for that information test. That's the initial response.
Yeah, we do have it established, like, if you want to come and get a piece of paper, what is it, Patty, 15 cents, a sheet or something like that?
That's statutory, no.
Yeah. So, because that's dictated by the state. So we have that. So basically what you'd have to do technically, I guess, is 5,000 pages times 15 cents.
Well, if it's, if I made it, I just read this law recently, I was just brushing up on it just to understand the scope of this, given having just gotten this position. And it's the per page amount that you say, but when, and I think counsel alluded to this, if you have to bring in someone special to do this or take special work, you can charge for all of that too. So if they really want this, that's fine, they'll be prepaying or putting deposits up for all of this. And, you know, we'll be happy to bring someone in, a special, you know, records custodian who can do all of this stuff. But it's not just 15 cents per page, we can, we can charge you for the computer time and for all the other people who will go back and actually generate all of this stuff. So if they really want that, certainly Florida law provides them that, but it's not free. Counsel, did you have anything else?
No, sir, I think that's about it for now. Probably going to weigh in to your comments when we get into that legislation. Take a few minutes.
Okay. Next comes the city manager, Ms. Reeves. We have a monthly financial report, and your comments. Do you want the financial report first?
Yeah.
Okay. Lady Cuzar?
She, it's on, you have it in your packet, it's on the screen.
Welcome, everybody. All the way past numbers in there. This is your first financial package. And we are in the fifth month. This is for February 2019, so that puts us 41.67% into the fiscal year. And so far, we're pretty well on track. Our revenues are at 56.22%, which is over anticipation. And it's, this is just a repeat of what we've been seeing, and that's because Advalorm is due November 1st, we received all our FIM grants, and rental registrations go out in September, but are due by October 31st. So we tend to get a lot of revenue upfront, and then that will level out. It's a tiny issue, will level out by year end. Expenditures are right on track at 41.14%. And then the transfers out to the Capital Projects Fund, that peaked at 7.95, pushes the total up to 45.51%. Do you have any questions on the general fund? The Marina Fund is at 45.91%, and again, that's, that's right on track. And expenditures are again still at the 7%. And that's because we have not expended any capital projects, depreciation, or transfers to the general fund. All those things happen at the end of the year. Capital projects are not going to happen in the Marina Fund at all this year because the city manager is rolling over those funds for a larger project that he named aside at the budget workshops that are coming up. And so that, that is right on track. Operating costs are at 46.77%. So Marina Fund is, is right on track. And that brings us to the Capital Projects Fund. Taxes are only at 14.22%, and that is for infrastructure stacks, which comes from the state of Florida, and that's about three months in a year. And that's pretty typical for the state. Usually by the end of the year, we're anywhere between two and three months behind, and we'll accrue it so that we'll show a full year's revenue for that fiscal year. But again, it's going to carry forward to the next year. We reverse those as they come in, and that's why it looks so low, because those funds came in, we reversed the accruals, so now we're just showing two months of the revenue there. Grants, what you're seeing there is the Gulf Beaches beautification from Pinellas County. We have paid Duke just about a million dollars. And you can see that they're marking up Gulf Boulevard and starting that. And then they reimburse us once we've made those payments, and so that's why that's so high. It's not actually over budget. You see, it says 180.61%. That's actually because those funds are carrying over. This is the last fiscal year of the 10-year project for that batch of the Gulf Boulevard beautification, but Lynn, I think they renewed that, didn't they? We got another 10 years coming up. So once this cycle ends, we'll have another cycle coming in for the next year. We're not sure what the total of that's going to be. But that, that item is not over budget. We're still under budget. When we get to the capital at the very end of the report, you'll see how much we have left to spend there. Interest on investments is, is very high, and that's because when we borrowed the money for the three series bonds for the undergrounding of Bellevue Estates Island, we've invested that money into the SBA until such high as we have to utilize it to pay expenses. And so that was unanticipated interest income when we did last year's budget. And so we're making a little bit of money on that while we're waiting for that project to get started. Again, you're seeing the special assessments, it's 100%. That was not even budgeted for because this didn't happen until, we didn't close on the loan until September 27th, and the budget was already done and finalized. So that's a line of revenue that we didn't anticipate when we did the budget. So next year, when we start doing budget workshops coming up, we'll, we'll have that factored in. And again, you're seeing transfers in from the general fund. That's a budgeted item. We had to transfer in $400,000 in order to make that Duke energy payment. We still owe the fund 290, and that will probably happen at year end. There aren't a lot of operating costs in the Capital Projects Fund because it's basically a construction fund. So that's why you're not saying anything there. The capital improvements, we're going to go into detail with that on the next screen. That, again, is your undergrounding for Bellevue Island Estates. It's the undergrounding for Gulf Boulevard for the beautification project. Also includes stormwater improvement, seawall repair. And again, for new members, it's not over budget. There are items that we've budgeted over the years and carried over, and the bulk of the work is happening now. Debt services is right on track, it pays quarterly. We've made two quarterly payments, and so it's at 50%. So that's, that's right where capital projects is looking good. We'll talk about this real quick before we get to the details on the capital projects. These are the cash investments. This is just for the general fund, we've got 3.39. Again, for those of you who are new, who haven't seen this, color-coded these investments so that you have an idea of what's actually available. There's a million dollars that we have designated for Hurricane Fund, and that's what's highlighted in red. We can't touch those funds, plus a few items that are being carried forward in the general fund capital accounts. The items in yellow are, they're accessible, but they're CDs, so we can't just get our hands on them right away. But if we were to need them, we can cash out CDs. Items in green are cash and available to us for operating room and whatever we need. And then on the far right, you see the interest that was just for the general fund for that month. The next page is your Marina Fund and your capital. Same thing. Marina Fund just has a cash account in CDs. Your Capital Projects Fund, everything in that fund is designated for capital improvements, so none of it is expendable. The items that are in the dark red are highlighted for you because that's specifically for the Bellevue Estates Island undergrounding project, and that's tied to the loan that we received. And this just sums up the three funds, what's available, what's short-term in the CDs, and what's non-spendable. And this just gives you an idea of the, in the general fund, we've got the million for the hurricane, but then there's an additional 90,300 that was also non-spendable in that red column, and that's for all of these accumulation accounts, plus one PO that's still outstanding in the general fund. And here is the detail on the capital. Did anybody have questions on, on the cash funds before I get into the capital detail?
I do.
Okay. Which page?
Schedule, it actually repeats a couple times, but the schedule of cash and investments continued that one. It actually goes to the one before that also. This is more of a question, it is a question. As I look at these investments, I see that they're pretty much dispersed amongst three locations: SunTrust Bank of Tampa, Bank United of Clearwater, and the SBA. Forget about petty cash, it's too small to afford about $100 bucks. My question in looking at this was, what is our exposure in terms of those institutions?
Zero. When you have public funds, you're only allowed to invest them in banks that are qualified public depositories. And a lot of times when I'm investing into CDs or other investments, a lot of people go, oh, well, I saw advertised for 3.95 somewhere. And yes, I'd love to do that, but that's for public deposits, and your deposits are insured up to $250,000. But I can only invest my money in a qualified public depository, and we get different rates, lower rates, because they are public deposits. And what that means is each dollar that we have in that bank, they have to collateralize dollar for dollar. So the 250 doesn't apply to us. All our money is, is protected under that rule.
That was my concern, was, so you're not part of the regular FDIC, it's qualified public depository, it's not limited to...
That, that is correct.
And that also goes for the SBA?
That's correct. The SBA is a state-run bank, so it's not a bank, it's an investment pool.
That's fine, that's excellent answer, that's what I wanted to hear. I didn't have any other questions on it.
Anybody else? All right, go ahead, ma'am. Okay, the first page that you're seeing on the capital, I break it into two parts so it's, it's easier to look at. This page basically is just for our accumulation accounts. These are items that we're budgeting for, that we are not going to need to do for many years, but we're putting money aside every year so that when we do need to redo the roof or something big, we've got a pool of money set aside for that. And that's, that's all of those, with the exception of that Bayside master plan, although that's what it's become now. We've done repairs to it, we redid the basketball court thing and that type of thing, a few other repairs over there. That's the expense that you're seeing there in that column. But again, for 2018, 19, we budgeted $10,000 and will continue to budget unless and until we decide to go for that. Lynn and Kyle are looking into matching grants, and if we get a big matching grant, we already have a plan for Bayside Park that previous councils approved. And so if we're able to get a matching grant, then what they'll do is that go forward in another budget for you all to decide whether you want to move forward on, on doing something big in, in Bayside Park. But for right now, it's in the accumulation accounts. The second page are the capital projects that we're actively working on. Street resurfacing is kind of an accumulation account, but not really, because street resurfacing is all tied together with the stormwater improvements. When you dig up the road to do stormwater improvements, then you've got to go in afterwards and pave the roads in new valley curves and that kind of thing. So those always have to be kind of organized together and planned when you do those projects. So we haven't used street resurfacing yet because it's still ongoing with, with the stormwater bridges. We did a big bridge repair on Harrison, which is complete, you all saw the pictures of that last two, two reports ago. And I believe Belle Isle, that's complete now, is it? Yep, so the seawall repair on Belle Isle is complete. And so then the big ones that we have going on now are Gulf Boulevard beautification and the underground of the utilities. And as you can see, that's, that's where a lot of this activity is going on. And as I mentioned before, when we were looking at the budget to actuals, it appeared that some of the items in capital were over budget. But the green column here, this shows you what's left of the total budget. All the funds that we've budgeted and will carry over from prior years is the first column. The second column is going to show you what we've spent this fiscal year. The third column is the current year's new appropriation. And then the column next to that is going to back out any outstanding POs, and that's going to give you what's left to spend. So for instance, seawall repair, that, that project has come to completion, and it's got 31,820. And I'm assuming that's because you came in unimagined and we're not going to spend any more of that?
We're, we're going to spend money to put in the irrigation and new sod and dirt there, but that's going to be a more, I'll call it a city project, as opposed to paying the contractor 20% on top of what the stuff costs.
The Gulf Boulevard beautification has $230,000 left to spend. That was originally, was it 2.15 million or 2.3 million?
2.7 total.
583 times 5.
No, because it's 271 for a few years. So anyways, this year we did the bulk of the work with getting Duke out here and starting to do the undergrounding. So like I said, there's only 230,000 left to spend in the Gulf Boulevard beautification, but then we'll have a new cycle that comes in and we'll decide how you want to, how you want to handle that. And the undergrounding of utilities has just gotten started. We've got 2.09 million budgeted for that, and we've only spent 619,000 so far, but it sounds like that is rolling along and we're going to see some big results soon, I'm sure. So you've got 1.3 million left to spend for undergrounding. That's pretty much all we have for capital.
I have one question, going back to general fund. Non-departmental, illegal portion, maybe we're speaking too soon, that based on the letter that Mr. Marino just got, maybe we're going to be more legal, but $6,900 on a $31,000 budget worth like about 17% so far this year, that just seems a little bit lower than where, you know, where it would be normally on budget. Is there a particular reason? Is there a particular reason?
It's the detail. I do bring away... I usually bring a list down of the detail of everything. I didn't bring it this time. So, what I will do is I will get the detail for that. And I can either email it to all of you or you just want it to your preference. Sure.
Yes, everyone's okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'll get the detail for that and I'll email it to everyone.
I just want to tell you, you know, I'm a financial person first before I was an attorney. And these were very comprehensive statements. They were very well-done, very well-prepared, and very informative. So, thank you.
Can I ask a question right quick? Back to general funds. I see law enforcement. We're definitely paying money out. And I've noticed that there's a lot of revenue being collected in our neighborhood right now. Do we get any of that back?
When you say a lot of money being collected, in what manner?
Citations.
Citations, yes. Let's see. Where is that going to go to? So, when you see... Do I have funds and court measures? Individualized dollars? Is that all going? Let's see.
Yeah, you do. It's up on top. 8,700?
Yeah, 8,700. Basically, 1,710. Since we've taken over collecting the parking tickets ourself, the bulk of that is from parking tickets. The county tends to be a little bit in arrears getting the money to us, but they take a piece of everything. So, the only time we're getting revenue for citations is when they collect the money. They collect legal fees, court fees, that kind of thing. We get a percentage of that. And it's averaging out under 300 a month. So, the bulk of that is all parking tickets.
Melanie? Melanie? You have a separate line item for the parking fees. Is that fee... That's not tickets. That's the parking meters.
Oh, sorry. I was going to...
That's parking meters.
Parking meters, yeah. Parking fees and yeah. Something specifically, yeah.
Yeah, we started because, about a year ago, I guess. I changed that to us collecting the parking tickets instead of... Because in our ordinance, it kind of allows us to do that. And... Or it does allow us to do that. Because what we were doing previously, the sheriff would issue a parking citation. He would turn it into sheriff's office. Parking citation's $35. If they collected it, they would... Regardless, they would charge $10 for that. And if they collected it, we'd get to 25.
But they charged us 10 whether they collected it?
And if they didn't collect it, we would get nothing. But we'd pay $10. So, we brought that in-house. And the code enforcement officer is being very diligent about if they don't pay it, we send them a letter. And right now, we're researching even sending tickets that were not paid, and mostly they're out of state, to collection. We're looking into a collection agency. Because, you know, we... They didn't pay their ticket. Then it doubles in 15 days. And then we send them three letters, and it goes up to 120 at that point.
35 to 70 a month.
Another 50 because of the processing time. But we're looking into turning those over to a collection agency. And hopefully, we'll get something from that also.
Thanks for the clarification.
Kyle, I mentioned something. Many years ago, when I wrote to you, parking enforcement ordinance for Hillsborough County, this problem of collecting these parking tickets was significant. But we worked a deal with the tax collector that you couldn't renew your tag if you had the outstanding parking tickets. And they were collecting a lot of money because people weren't renewing their tags. They couldn't renew their tags if it was out there. Now, that went in the statewide system. And it seemed to work over there in Hillsborough. But over here, we tried to suggest that in Pinellas, and they weren't too anxious to want to play with a tax collector here. And that was under previous tax collectors. So, maybe the situation has changed.
Well, we can do that. But it's... There's some things we have to do with our server because they have to be able to VPN in to look at it. And I'm not totally clear if... I'm comfortable with that at this point. So, it is possible to do it. We do have access to David. So, we can... We got that about a year ago also. We have a contract with them. And what David gives us, it gives us the ability to look up a Florida license plate and get an address. So, we have ways to contact the people. But the tag, we haven't got that far yet. But it's something we're still working on.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have any questions from the audience? Thank you.
Does New York City or New Jersey ever say... Actually, I remember that they need pretty hard parking ticket enforcement.
That could actually lead to your arrest if you don't pay your parking fines. Yeah. Even a small... Even an original meter.
I thought they just booted them.
Um, New York does. That's something we might consider. Mr. Reeves?
Okay. Melanie's already told you that Belle Isle Seawall Project, we've done a walkthrough for the contractor. It's done. We will be putting irrigation sod and some more soil down there. The people that live in Melville Estates Island got a letter, just telling them kind of what's going on. And to tell them if they want to prepay their assessment, they're welcome to do that. But there's only one opportunity, and that's in April of every year because we have to pay the loan down on May 1st. Good news, if you've been north of the city, you'll see some big pools of conduit down there. It's not everything yet. But the conduit contractor is thinking he's going to start in the next week or so, or sooner so. You're going to see some things happening with that for the residents in W. Estates Island. The staff's been going through emergency operations training with Pinellas County the last couple of weeks. I am sending the public work staff and the code enforcement officer to parking enforcement class in a couple of weeks. So, then they will be able to give a parking ticket in our access. That's just giving us some extra ability to monitor them. Councilmember Gass asked about a mailbox for... Voice mailbox for the council. And I've got that information. And really, what I need to know is the council wanting to do that. It's a... You would get a phone number with a voice mailbox attached to it. And you could give that number out. There is a way to capture the messages because for public records access, we may need to do that. Patty's done some research on that. But, you know, if the council wants that, we'll be glad to set them up.
I might get some clarification on our request. The reason why. Basically, everyone knows you have three minutes at the beginning of each one of these sessions. A lot of people feel like it's not enough or they're intimidated, things like that. Also, there's not really a good way to communicate directly with a council member without just calling them on their personal cell phone. So, what I requested was if it would be possible to have direct inward dialing. Everyone would get their own phone number. And you could pick your favorite council member or mayor. And...
A council member.
And basically, you could leave a message, share your concerns. And there wouldn't be so much of a timeline. Basically, I would consider it to be a direct line of communication. And I was hoping that you would say that, yes, it would somehow be documented if necessary. So, I really think it's a good idea because I'm already getting calls. I'm already getting emails. I'm getting a lot of questions. And sometimes it takes time. And I don't necessarily want to, you know, give this out to everybody in town. So, I think it's a great idea. And it's up to you guys.
The cost is about $100 to get it converted. So, it's up to you. Each one would have a different telephone number. And then you'd have a mailbox attached to it. But you would have to go in and check the message.
That's why we're saying, would it send us a notification if we handle us?
No. Well, no, because the telephone number would be here. It's not like you need your voicemail. Yeah, but you might be able to look. I don't know if that's a fact or not. Maybe it can be forwarded. I don't know that for a fact.
I would be interested if I got a notification. But if I have one more step, and I have to call in and check it every day, I don't... I have no interest. I'll give them my cellphone. I don't get that many people usually stop me on the street and talk to me.
So, it's up to the council if they want to do this or not do it.
So, I'm asking. I have to agree with Councilmember Shirley. You know, if you have to dial in, because we don't know. You know, you could have three calls in one day, and then you may not get a call for a month. So, if there's a way you can get that, I mean, it's... It would make it a lot easier. At least you know something, so you can call in and find out.
Could you check and see if it has forwarding capabilities or you get that message on your personal phone number?
Yeah. The other option, if the council, you know, as a group didn't want to do it, you know, we could make a, I'll call it a city council hotline. And, you know, the staff, I'd just have a staff person check it daily. And if it's a message for Councilmember Gass, we'll send you the information by email or whatever. That's another option. And that would only be, you know, one line that we would be monitoring. But that's an option too. But I will check on the call forwarding. So, what I'm hearing now is if it's able to be call-forwarded, it's okay. If it's not, you want to do the other thing.
I would like to say something. While all of us were running, all the ones that ran in our town, I mean, we ran on open communication. Feel free to talk to us. Now, we're saying, call this fake number. Well, not fake, but a different number. And leave a voicemail for us, and then we'll get back to you. I disagree with it. I do agree with the last suggestion with one call and then somebody monitor in case they can't get a hold of us. But we all ran with open communication. Feel free to talk to us. And now, we're saying, sorry. But we don't have time. So, I mean, I'm busy as well. That's just my opinion.
Let me make it clear. People have been calling my law office, and they are welcome to call it. I'm not stopping people from calling me. It's just a convenience of how we can otherwise do this and not co-mingle it with our regular businesses. So, my number's published. It's out there. All you got to do is Google my name. You can know how to dial me. I'm not going to ever not take a call from a citizen. I've been responding to emails also. So, but I think if you have the ability to know when there's something out there, it's good. The only thing I don't like about the idea of the city is if somebody wants to leave us a private message, you know, to us, and it may concern someone else, you know, it's not private if somebody else is monitoring. So, that's the only downside with that.
So, what's the consensus?
It sounds to me like the council prefers just the general mailbox.
Is that the consensus? We just create a general mailbox that... We'll just call it the city council mailbox hotline. How's that?
Unless you can get the people... Unless you can get notification.
Well, then, we would notify you.
Can we each just kind of say what we'd like? Like, for me, if someone calls up for me, give them my cellphone. I'll answer or get back to them when I can. But at least I know they're trying to reach me. Whereas if it's sitting on a voicemail somewhere, and it could be days before I hear about it, if they call on a Friday night and we're closed on Monday, we're not, you know, we're not going to give back to them for several days if it goes through a general mailbox here. For me, just give them my cell phone.
Well, what I was saying is if we just did the hotline mailbox, at least if someone called... Let's say they call on Saturday, and they wanted you to get back. Well, then, Monday morning, we would take their message and get it to you, you know, that they wanted to call. They wanted to talk to you.
I'm good with that. Do you want to look into this? Maybe bring it up at our work session? And then we can kick it around? Because any one of these is good suggestions. It really won't work.
Yeah, well, I know we can do... I know we can do the one general mailbox. That's not a problem. And it sounds like that's probably where the council's leaning.
Basically, what I was trying to accomplish also was to take it out of the hands of the front desk so that they are not having to deal with every single phone call.
Understand. Not a problem. Okay.
One question. Are there public records implications for this?
It would be if it came here, yes. We'd have to retain it.
That's correct.
Yeah, that is correct if it came here. If it was just... Well, technically, Patty...
Any of them, really?
Yeah.
If they contacted us, all of it's a public record.
Right. Everything, it's gotten to the point, public records, that everything, it's got, if it pertains to the city or city business. And in the Clearwater, and the Clearwater City Council, it's a Clearwater case. It's clear. It's got to be personal to be exempt as it ain't due to city business, no matter what forum it's in, it's a public record.
So, that's the strength of email, isn't it?
Right.
Unbelievable. But I mean, I don't know. How do you...
Not everyone can email. We're back to the ADA.
But how do you maintain the public records for the voicemail?
Well, the voicemails can be kept. They can be kept. I did talk to Southern Telephone about that because, you know, I wanted to have all my bases covered before I even brought it up. I know Councilmember Gass and I have been talking about it back and forth. But I did talk to them, and they said, yes, there is a way for them to be archived if we needed them. So, that's not a problem. So, okay.
There's a citizen.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to do 7th Street, Better Beach? Ivonage has the capabilities. If someone, if you're all going to have separate phone numbers, it actually has the capabilities of transferring it into a written message into your phones. So, it's just something to think about. You could actually have it synced into your phones and be able to see the message. So, if you're in a meeting, doing whatever, and you see this written message, you could actually respond as soon as you wanted to. And then it would also cover the public record law that would, you know, that we're required to have to, you know... And then the other thing too is there is... Chime it in on the ADA compliance thing. They do have it, or somebody whose death can receive phone calls. And they look down and they see it. and they look down and they see it. It is transcribed and the cell services do have that because I actually have a grandson who lives there and he has that service. So there's two, two sources to look at. Ivonage, you could get separate phone numbers like you were talking about and still keep, what Councilman Swoop was saying about is so you have that constant contact with them, like she was saying that you should. And I think it would be a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving forward, uh, we've had talks about alert Pinellas and ready Pinellas. Alert Pinellas has been on our website for a very long time. Uh, and there is an agreement that we have if we, uh, want to subscribe to it. Uh, actually, I'm looking at that January of last year. So we have that ability, but in most cases, all the emergency notifications are sent out by the county. Uh, I know that Councilmember Gaddis, and I don't know what Treasure Island's doing, but if you hit their link, it goes to Pinellas County. I don't know if they're sending something from the city out, but there's limitations on what you can send out. It, it has to be an emergency message.
Uh, basically, a good example of that is we've had two water main breaks recently and I know we're new about it, but, uh, Wendy subscribes to that one in Treasure Island. Every time they have a water main break, she gets the alert.
Well, Pinellas County should be doing that and I, and I'll check on that to see why they're not doing that. But we have the ability, although the contract is expiring in June, uh, the state paid for this alert Pinellas, or alert forward it's called. And, uh, so we'll massage that a little more, just to let you know that. And Seek, Click, Fix is, is a cost. It's, it's a, it's a program that the city would have to buy. It ranges somewhere in the three to five thousand dollars annually. Uh, Ina Rock's Beach uses it, the county uses it. And, and we get some comments from the county occasionally, like, uh, someone will turn in, one of the bridge lights is out and they forward that message to me because it's our responsibility to get the lighting people to take care of it. Uh, but if we want to get a standalone system, it would cost us in the neighborhood between three and five thousand dollars annually. So I don't know what that benefit really would be major, but, you know, if the council wants us to look further into that, we can get a more, uh, direct quote to that. So I don't, I don't know what the council's pleasure. What it basically does, it's, it's a, it's a way for, as an example, let's say, uh, a shower on Sixth Street broke over the weekend, uh, and the residents saw it. Uh, they can send, type in to seek, click fix, tell it, and it would send a message to someone to turn the water off, as an example. So that's what the benefit of it is, things like that. Uh, but, you know, it's, it's really, um, not a cheap adventure for small communities. So. And. I know everyone knew about the flood map changes. I went to the, the flood organization last week and, uh, they're getting ready to send our maps into the preliminary. They haven't posted it in the national registry yet. Uh, and the council may not know this, but in some areas, the city, the BFE went from ten to eight. I can't remember where I live, what day, so I'm happy about that because maybe the flood insurance will go down a little bit, but, uh, so those map changes will be coming out. And I also spoke to a, a company at the, the flood training, uh, and I may have them come over and talk to us a little bit about, for the residents, that, uh, we may have like an open house or something for that, that, because they've got some new products out that a home like myself could purchase and you could put at your doors and just anchored in, stops the water from going inside the garage or something of that nature. And, uh, the same company also does something with flood insurance. So he may be able to provide some opportunities for, to help the residents. So, uh, the gentleman's based in Sarasota and he told me to get back to me. So we, we'll do that sometime here. Okay, that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Reese?
Uh, Lynn, I've got a couple. Ninth Street, that one house on Ninth Street, how is that?
They have till May, uh, for their eighteen months. They've been given, sent a letter because their, their eighteen months is up and they can't ask for a six-month extension. They haven't done that yet. Uh, and I will tell you the one on, since you're bringing those type houses up, there's also one on Donato that's pushing the envelope. Uh, and there is one on Harrison Avenue that's going to lose his envelope in another week. He, he has till the eleventh of April, I believe it is. I might be a couple of days off there. Uh, that's his actual additional extension that is approved and then we will take him to code enforcement, to the magistrate, because it's, he's not making progress. And I don't know, maybe he's, the guy that was in charge is evidently not around much because we can't seem to get a hold of him.
The next question.
If he wants some feedback on that, the owner is in town and at the sign of the day now. And I suggested that he come down and talk to me, so.
Yeah, he, he, he should.
Yes.
Because he didn't come to a meeting that I tried to schedule with him previously.
Now, Lynn, the next one is, uh, I know we're talking about taking cameras and taking a look around.
We haven't said anything, but we'll, we'll try to figure out something or we can find something out.
And last but not least, I know we've all talked about the light on Gulf Boulevard and they put a sign up, you can make a turn on red. Well, I've been monitoring and trying to get out on Twenty Second on Gulf Boulevard and it seems on a busy weekend, there is no, whatsoever, there's no interval between cars if you can make it out safely and get into the night. So what do you think we could do to try to resolve that to get a little space, thirty, twenty cars or whatever?
Well, I did talk to, uh, Tom Morseburn. He's the transportation for the county. Uh, my concern about, even though I got the signs put up, uh, and now the streetlights are up there, so it's well lit. Uh, but I talked to him about putting the flashing right turn light because there was some concern about that. And I talked to him about talking to the camera people who are supposed to be monitoring it to move more traffic as the outflow of, you know, if they're coming in, maybe leave the light a little longer so they keep going down the street. Uh, when they're going off the beach in the later in the day, maybe instead of a two-minute light, it's a four-minute light just to get the traffic off the beach. So I have talked to the county about that.
Well, let's, uh, quickly come up with some, had an idea to get a little bit of.
Yeah.
Between these cars because now that you've got that stopped on red and able to make a turn, well, that's all fine and all good, but when the light does turn red, now there's so much traffic coming from Ina Rock's Beach, you just, you can sit there for like ten minutes and wait to get out. And even though at that particular point, the traffic may be twenty miles an hour, just to get out safely, it's, you're taking a lot of time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm well aware of it and I, I know the, this weekend, it was not fun. Well, it was fun for me to go across because it's easy, but it wasn't fun for me to come back.
That's a good point. That's one of those unintended consequences of making people want to turn right there. It's, it's uninterrupted.
Right, that's, that's the problem you created.
Yeah, I agree.
Pretty much have to span your wheels to get out.
I thought that was you.
That was me.
I would like to ask, is there any way to open up that left turn lane, you know, so that you can go south? Because we're having just as many issues because we need to go south versus north. But you have to go almost all the way to the light to actually get in the turn lane. So can we just fly down that one lane, just fly down?
Well, I'm not.
At a normal speed.
I'm not going to say you can, but I'm not going to say I haven't. So, uh. No, uh, you know, maybe I can talk to the county about taking that. You know, the lane can still stay there, but it, maybe we gotta.
One long lane. Because it's raining right now. I think legal answer, if it has the sheriff in the back, I think that's a ticket. Your car, because you're crossing a lane that you're not supposed to. But, um, yeah, we've all probably done that. I didn't, but.
Mayor, I know you haven't done that.
I never did that. But yeah, if they can make that one lane, then I, I agree.
I'll, I'll talk to Tom, at, uh, Tom Morseburn, see if that's possible to. It's basically hanging out those, this, whatever it is.
Well, since we're talking about speed, I have a quick question of how to go about this. Any ideas how we could possibly, obviously if everyone's willing, to maybe lower the speed from twenty-five to twenty in neighborhoods? Because I know the, the sheriff's been doing an awesome job on Twenty Second and Donato, um, giving out a lot of warnings or citations, but coming down to Donato and that Twenty Second corner, I mean, they just speed. And I know we had the cameras out there and determine, but I mean, coming up to my house with my kids and watch those cars fly by is my four-year-old right there and see if it doesn't, you know, make you nervous. So I don't know how that happens. More of a question, just curious.
I'm trying to remember if there was a state requirement for approval of going down to twenty miles an hour on a public street. It may require state approval. I remember seeing it some years ago with regard to lowering speed limit, staying below thirty or about low to twenty-five per hour. I mean, we can check into it if you want and I don't know if there's a consensus here on that.
What I see in other neighborhoods, uh, around the county is, uh, problem areas, they actually install speed homes.
Yeah.
I tried. Lynn and I talked about that long ago. That's where we had the cameras up and there wasn't a need, but coming into my house, Lynn, I'm telling you, you'll see the need.
Just a comment.
Yeah. Because I mean, I even have those little orange and green, you know, fluorescent little things with the flag and people speed right by them and it's, it's scary. And I don't want a kid to get hit by a car who wanted to make a change. Trying to make the change now.
Yeah, we did put speed tables on First Street. They're not speed bumps that are speed tables. So they're probably, I think they're six or ten foot long. The car actually gets on top of them, but it does slow down.
It's a deterrent.
It's a deterrent. So, you know, what we probably all know as a speed bump is this little mound like this that's about this wide and when you hit it, well, it's probably like in Largo Mall. You could hit them things and shake your car far. But the speed table on First and Seconds or at Harbor seemed to, could slow the traffic there a little bit. So that may be an option. It's not as bad, but the residents in the neighborhood would have to say they want that.
Do you want a petition?
Yeah, it would have to be that and we'd have to bring it to the council to see.
Also, uh, since we brought up speed tables, I, uh, know several people on Ninth Street how, um, are thinking about requesting speed tables. And the reason why is that sign when you're headed north on Gulf Boulevard is right there by Ninth that says Largo, uh, you know, a couple others. And people turn down Ninth Street thinking that's where they're supposed to turn. So I don't know if we could leave that sign maybe a little bit or, you know, because they get a lot of traffic on Ninth because they think they're going all the way through or not.
Yeah, that's a county sign, so we'll have to find out, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Lynn, um, you and I spoke about, as long as we're on the speed topic here, um, and it doesn't happen on the weekends, but it happens every time else. And it certainly happens at night, Gulf Boulevard. Um, we were talking, it's, Weller Beach is the only place where it's thirty-five. It's thirty in all the other communities. And you and I had spoken about that. You said you were going to try and take a look into it. I know you've been having a bunch of events and stuff outside of here, but I just want to make sure that's still stated and promised because, um, that is a concern. You could hear them at night. We, we are sixty feet away, so we hear it constantly and, um, it's scary sometimes how fast some people are going on that road.
That's, that's still on my list.
I'm sorry?
It's still on my list.
Okay.
You did a, a traffic survey back there on Donato on Twenty Second. Can you pull up that data so we can look at it?
Yeah, we, I think we had one or two cars that went over the threshold. The sheriff did it for me. Put a, put a box up there and it was at, it was at, it was at the corner because, uh, Mr. Prescott called me up and wanted to know what this box was on his home. It was right there at the corner of Alita and Twenty Second. But, and we put the police car down there for a while, but then the neighborhood called me complaining that the police car was in their neighborhood and they didn't want it there, uh, which routinely seems to happen when I move a police car somewhere else. They, they don't want it there.
Well, I would say when you get past that corner of Alita, that's where the speed comes. Because they come from, you know, the end of Donato and Alita. They take that corner, build up speed until they get to the stop sign. So if we can move that camera towards the end of Donato, you'll see people, even as they turn that stop sign or that corner, they're booking it to go down Donato. That's where the speed is.
Well, we can, I can ask Captain Liner again to put that back up. I mean, we did it at like three locations, Ninth Street. We had an anomaly there. There's no way somebody got to sixty miles an hour halfway down Ninth Street. Unless they were doing sixty.
You should place it on Bell Isle too. It's a long stretch and it's.
And we did it on First Street, but all the, all the data was that it, you know, it wasn't exceeding the speed limit. So we'll try to do it. Not a problem.
Lynn, I have one, one other item. Um, the beach access, I think it's twelve, the very first beach, beach access, um, where you turn at the light here.
Yeah, it's twelve.
The bush is so overgrown, you cannot see around it when you're trying to pull out of there.
Well, that's going to be.
With all that traffic, that's an issue, you know.
Jody then brings up another topic. It's a night for traffic. The house on the corner, House on the corner, cause way in. Trying to turn a little north and you're looking south at the traffic that edge of bushes. Not going to be that much.
Are you talking about the thing that, I think it's a pepper. We can probably tell them to take that out if it's a pepper. But they have at least cleaned the house up. It looks better than it used to. Used to look really bad. So progress.
Lynn, one other item, um, you and I have discussed it, but I think to the benefit of the rest of the councilmen for the citizens. Uh, last time, just so everyone knows, our work session, council agreed that we were going to bid out some contracts that have been, um, not even contracts, some relationships that have been longstanding in our, uh, city, engineering and attorneys. We expect that those individuals will bid again on that, but we were in the process of doing RFQs and, uh, I believe Lynn was in the process of working on the RFQs right now. So just an update on that, on that.
Uh, the, the attorney RFQ I will have bring to you at the May meeting. The engineering, we probably will do that in the June meeting and I'll put it out there in the summer because the, my thing with that is we have a contract with one of those engineering firms that expires November fourth, maybe something like that. So I don't want to infringe that contract because we have that established. The other two, so we'll just do them all at once. Uh, and last time, they picked three firms, uh, to do different services, mainly because of what their expertise was. Uh, so we'll be doing the same thing for that in, during the summer months and then select a firm sometime in the fall.
And that was done for convenience, just so everyone knows, because he has three engineering contracts that aren't coming up at the same, but they are coming up, but it'd be easier to bid them all at the same time. It just would be, right, work easier. So we're going to do it again. The individuals who are presently there certainly are welcome to bid and may very well be coming back. For all of them.
I'll be adjusting that to May meeting when you bring this matter up for vote.
Anybody, any other council questions?
I have one additional question. The Bellevue Island Estates, um, undergrounding, we have a, we're coming under budget on a lot of items. Are the, are the residents going to receive a rebate? What happens when we're, I mean, because they've all extended, many of them prepaid, some of it's on their taxes. How's that work to, how do we get that money back to them?
Well, there, there's a, probably what I would suggest is we would just reduce the assessment. So it's not as big as it is for whatever savings. The people that prepaid, they would get an equal amount back depending on what they prepaid.
I think I'm more concerned about those that are paying it through their taxes. How does that get adjusted?
Well, every year, actually, I have to have the preliminary assessment roll to, uh, the tax, is it the appraiser collector? I have, might have it backwards, but I have to have the preliminary to them, uh, June first, which we'll be working on. And that's why I sent that letter out to say if anybody wants to prepay, and if you didn't, then you have to wait a year. And so I don't have to change that assessment roll to zero for, there's twenty, let's see, I think there's fifteen or sixteen properties that pay one hundred percent. And there's some that didn't pay the second assessment. There's like six properties that didn't, you know, they paid the first upfront, but they didn't pay the fifty-five hundred assessment. So that will, those numbers would be adjusted when I send the final assessment roll in September. So over the summer months, there's two or three things. So over the summer months, there's two or three things, process that we have to do. We did it last summer, and we'll do the same thing this year. I don't know that the assessment will change by September. It may be a year away, mainly because I want the project finalized, cleaned up, and closed out. So, you know, whatever that number is, but we're working very hard to make sure we come in under those numbers and not have to spend even the contingency that we set up.
Good, okay, thanks.
So. And is your petition ready?
No, because I have five residents that live out of the state.
Any other questions? Any audience questions? Yes.
John Handzick, 103 22nd Street. I sat back there somewhat amused at the council just now discussing speeding in your neighborhood or neighborhoods. And a lot of it seems to be Bellar Island Estates. Now, I live on 22nd Street, just off of Gulf Boulevard. 22nd Street is a direct line to that little bridge, to your little island estate. You also have a lot of residents who come from there or Bay Shore and then walk down 22nd Street to go to the beach using the city's access next to the Bellar Beach Resort. I see this. I see every day, and it doesn't matter the time of day. People coming off of Gulf Boulevard, using 22nd between Gulf and Bay Shore as a straightaway drag strip. They come off the bridge. They might do a stop, or they do a rolling stop at the bridge, and it's another straightaway to Gulf. There aren't no sidewalks. Someone's gonna get hurt. And I've had multiple conversations with various deputies as they rotate, and I've gotten to know them over the four years, because they do house checks on a couple of my snowbird neighbors. And you don't want to know what I would do, because I would go to jail. I'll tell you. My first thought, I'd get an air gun and I'd shoot ping pongs, I'd shoot speeders. If that didn't work, I'd get an air gun and I'd shoot paintballs. And that really got the deputy's attention. And I said, that's how frustrated I am. And the city attorney has a point about lowering the speed limit. There's no reason for people to see if they get hit 50 between Gulf and Bay Shore or in the other way around. Think about this, you folks that live out there on the Island Estates. It might be one of your neighbors one day that you hit walking down 22nd to go to our beautiful beach. Thank you.
No, I agree. That's why when I go to the beach with my kids, I always go down 21st, because 22nd is not safe to walk down, because there aren't a lot of speeders. I mean, I think that whole area, and yeah, we're talking about that neighborhood, but I mean, we're talking about every neighborhood. There's speed, like you said, in Ballau, there's all over. So, I mean, I would love to address this issue with speed tables or whatever we need to do to keep all our residents safe, you know, being old. And again, I don't want a neighbor, a child, or anyone to be hit in order for us to be woken up to say, wow, we do have a problem, let's fix it. Let's fix the problem before someone gets hurt.
And you can take that and you can add it to Gulf Boulevard, because we cross to go to the beach every day in the summertime, and they don't yield to people in the crosswalk. So this is what's quality of life issues. It's all over the city. I've heard many complaints, by the way. Mr. Handzick, about 22nd Street when I was out, there was a lot of people that are complaining. It's a problem. So I'm gonna ask if council would like to put this as one of the work session topics, and then maybe we can get someone from the sheriff's department to talk what we can do about this thing and try and get some, you know, hit these hotspots, because I think it's time. I see a lot of warnings, and this is a personal opinion, and the sheriff does use excellent discretion, but sometimes you have to make a financial impact to teach the real lesson. So maybe we have to start taking it in people. If everyone wants, we can put this on the next council work session. Everybody in favor of that? Aye? Yep, Sue? Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Reeves? City clerk? Who we're honoring for a month here?
Thank you. Nope, nothing for him.
Okay. Do we have any unfinished business? City council comments, we'll go from this side this time, but next time I'm gonna go from the other side. So we'll start with Robenaki.
No, I think I said my piece. I never want any resident to feel like we're favoring one area of Bellar Beach. I know when I was campaigning, there was this feeling that there was one side of the bridge and the other side of the bridge, which floored me, because I always thought we were just one community. And that's definitely what I want. So I think we're doing a good job so far of trying to get our point across that we're one community, and we're trying to do everything for all.
Thank you. Marvin?
Another thing I think we all should watch is this home rule issue that has come up to light. And take a little look at that, and let's see if we can work together as a community to get some summer activity going on. From that's all.
Yes?
I'd like to thank everyone who made it to the end tonight. Appreciate you being here. Please tell your friends and neighbors to come back next time. Also, I am currently attending the Pinellas County Citizen University, and I'm learning some, some very interesting things about how the county works. And everyone, have me in your thoughts tomorrow night. I will be in the jail for three and a half hours.
Oh, they got you, huh?
Yeah, they finally got me. And the, the list of rules that went along with, with that invitation are pretty strict. I basically have to walk in there with just my clothes and nothing else. So anyway, I, again, I'm learning some, some valuable information. I'm trying to pass along as it comes in. This is week four. So I'll keep you posted. Also, I attended the Red Tide Summit. What was it, Thursday? And I think the general consensus was, most people were there looking for a smoking gun. Some of the brightest minds in the country attended that summit and basically were giving their opinions. And at the end of the day, they had no evidence, no conclusive evidence that humans were causing red tide. In fact, they stated that it was occurring way before we ever got here. Not saying I'm for or against anything, I'm just relaying the message. So don't be too quick to blame anyone whenever it happens. It's the first time it's happened to us this long, and I'm glad it's gone, but I just wanted to pass that along. And I think that's about all I've got. Oh, one last thing. The communication issue, obviously, I'm big on that. I'm not necessarily trying to dictate how we communicate with each other. I'm basically open to Florida ideas. That's one of the number one things that I heard whenever, before I was elected, about not being able to communicate with people, and that's why I ran on that, on that platform. We're working on it, and also the website. You may lose some things before we get it all back, but I'm going to work hard to make sure that we have as much information as we can on that website.
Mary Sherman?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to say. I think I covered most of it with Lynn early on. So just, you know, thank everyone for attending, and like Dave said, try to get more people to attend. I think the more participation, the better, the better off the city will be. And, you know, happy Easter to everyone. If I don't see you, enjoy your Easter vacation.
Mary Swol?
I also would like to thank everyone for attending. There is one item that I would like to see if we can put on the work session, and that's with the upcoming storms, potential storms, is maybe like a storm committee, so we can do a shelter in place type of presentation for you guys, as well as evacuation, return, those kinds of things. We've all, we've already been storms. So other than that, just have a great evening. I notice probably lately, those are getting hung. Thank you.
Linda?
I, I missed the issue with the animal control, Lynn Reeves there. I've seen some concerns by residents in the local area on Mexico and also the ring camera stuff, pictures of the critters walking around. I'm a fan of wildlife, but I, I know residents are concerned about their pets disappearing and stuff like that, so I don't know if you have any contact with animal control.
Yeah, I, we can check with, I, I don't know what they're doing. I know some of the animals, they don't do anything with, like raccoons and stuff. They'll, they'll tell you to come and get a trap, and you have to catch it yourself. So we'll get you a lasso?
I brought-
I got six raccoons behind my house, Lynn, if you want to start.
Patty, the second phase of the IEMO training, the slave for April 13, 14, is that still on? Do you know anything about that? I haven't seen any.
No. No, but I can check, if you know.
Okay, thanks. And I guess the last thing is the agenda board for the work session. Are we starting, are you calling for agenda items for the work session?
Certainly, yes, absolutely. We had a few, I had no objections, anybody else had, we heard?
No, I mean, you could put out an email.
Yeah, email, but you know, there was some suggestions tonight, and I think we could add these to them. So there's no objection. Right? No objections? Council on the Swol just made one before, disaster preparedness, I think that should be spoken about, so. I don't hear any objections, so Matt Clerk, if you'll add that?
I'm ready.
Thank you. Um, we've had a learning experience here in the last two weeks. Had a chance to attend with June, the Big C, and Mark was also there, and Sun Coast League of Cities, we did that on Friday. And I'll be brief, because there was a lot of eye opening here, at least to me. It turns out that our legislator, legislators in Trenton, I'm trying to say Trenton, I think in New Jersey, in Tallahassee are doing things that really are not in our best interest. That whole thing with the short-term rentals that we really like over here, that we think we're grandfathered in, well, there's a person in Tallahassee who's sponsoring the bill, and I believe they said it was like in the top five bills in terms of its number, which means it's going to move. That person apparently does rentals as part of their real estate practice, so they have self-interest. And anyplace else, this would probably not be acceptable, but apparently this is acceptable in the legislature. This bill is going to pass the House, and it's going to get into the Senate, it looks like, and it's going to move along. It would invalidate our grandfather clause. Right now, for the folks who may not be aware, we have a short-term rental prohibition in this city, and we're not permitted to touch so much as a comma in that ordinance, or else we would lose that grandfathering. Well, if they get their way, they're gonna take it away from us, and it won't matter what we do. So the, Sun Coast League of Cities and Big C are actively trying to lobby the folks there. I know they're going back up again in the, next week, next Monday. They wanted to get as much involvement as possible in this, and it's something that I don't think we're gonna be able to do this time, because they've already made their plans. But in the future, this is the kind of stuff that I will personally be involved in, and anyone is allowed to join me on that, but we are going to go up and we're gonna get in these people's faces and do what's in Bellar Beach's interest. These people in Tallahassee are not in, looking at what's in our best interest, they're looking at what's in their best interest. The other stuff I heard was, you know, when I was at Big C, and Mark heard this too, they were talking about the penny for Pinellas, and the county had done a carve-out of the money, and I guess they get to spend a certain amount of it how they see fit. Well, you'll be pleased to know that they're spending the money on low-income housing and workforce housing. And in order to qualify, your city has to have properties that they have taken over, basically, you know, people didn't pay their tax bill. Well, that's probably zero in our city, so we're not gonna get a nickel of that money. And I don't know that we would get a nickel of the money anyway, but we're gonna fight for it in the future, and we're going to make our voices heard. We have to do, once again, best in Bellar Beach's interest. So thank you for putting me on these boards or on these groups, and I'm going to be a local force. They'd asked me already to get involved, I couldn't do it because I wasn't appointed yet, but now I will be, and I will be getting involved in that, and I will be going to Tallahassee, and hopefully we can bring some results home. All I can say, I think Wanda Schwer said it before, contact your legislators, let them know, I mean, they, they're not gonna pay attention, and they've said this, they will not pay attention to these mass emails, so when you see these things that say, send the email out a thousand times, they're not gonna pay attention to that. They will pay attention to telephone calls, they will pay attention to it in-person visits. So I don't know if it's possible this late in the game, but certainly lobby these people. They're not out there to help us. So that was the two big things that I had. I covered everything else. I had one other request, either we can put it on the work session, or maybe we can agree to it, it's a personal thing. I spoke about this to some individuals that I met while we were out on the road, and I would like to open up this council session with the Pledge of Allegiance done by a lot of our students in the, in the city. And it doesn't have to be an honor student, it could be any student. It would just be an honor to them, and it gets them involved in their civic government. And I also would like to extend that to any veterans, active service or veterans, and I just think it's an honor. It really doesn't, I don't have to do the Pledge of Allegiance, I didn't see anything in the charter that makes me do it, so if there's any objection to that, I would just, or if there's no objection, I would just like to begin that. If people are interested, they can sign up at City Hall, and we'll take them in a rotation, and there's, there's no other qualification for it, as long as they know how to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so. Any objection? Okay, we'll start that then on May 1st. We don't do the, the work sessions, just on May 1st. Thank you. That's all I had. Mr. Marino, I know you said you might have had a question for mayor, comment on that legislation.
No, I just wanted to tell you, watch that Harris Act amendment that Judy Grant and Representative Lee from over in Brandon. These two guys surprised me. I know these two gentlemen, and I was shocked to have seen that. The main thing that's going to affect Bellar Beach is not the, the original Harris Act problems, but the fact that they're gonna put code enforcement into the Harris Act. That is unconscionable. And I just couldn't believe that you're doing that. And then, of course, you mentioned the short-term rentals. I don't know what's going on up in Tallahassee. They've always had a battle with our, our home rule. They don't like us to have home rule, and when the, when the courts have given us the home rule, that just undoes them. I don't know what they think they're gonna do with these 400 cities in, in Florida, but they're gonna be messing with a tiger, and it's not a paper tiger either.
That's why, and thank you, it's why it's so important, we participate in the Sun Coast League of Cities, and they're a powerful force, and they are listened to, and they have organized events, and anyone's eligible to come to that. So, you know, again, if anybody wants to do it, they wanna come with us, we're gonna be going every month, but they don't have to be on council. Any citizen can be involved, and absolutely, it's a very good experience. Robenaki, I'm sorry, was there for the Sun Coast League of Cities last time, just so presentation. So these people are really diligent about fighting, but we can't let them carry the load, we have to carry our own load here. With that said, I have nothing else. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.